Okay, here we go. I call the, call the order of the meeting, Committee of the Whole, August 17th, 2021. It is now 7:03 PM, 6:03 PM, I'm sorry, 6:03 PM. And if you would please call the roll, Ms. Henry.
Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
President.
Alderman Myers?
Here.
Alderman Ascher?
Here.
Alderman Walters?
He is excused at this time.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Here.
Alderman Scott?
Here.
Alderman Emerson?
She is excused at this time.
Alderman Ward?
Here.
Alderman Hayden?
Here.
Alderman Memms?
She is excused at this time. Okay, we have four. I look for an approval for the August 3rd, 2021 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Scott, do you have a motion? Mr. Myers, you have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor, who was the first and second?
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott has the first, Mr. Myers has the second.
Thank you. Alderman Scott?
Yes.
Alderman Myers? Alderman Ascher?
Yes.
Alderman Hayden? Alderman Mary Jane Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Bill Van Busker?
Yes.
Alderman Ward?
All right, motion carries. We will now move on to the fiscal year 2021, 2022 departmental budget presentations. First up, the police public safety sales tax fund, Robert Kuhl, what have you got for us, Chief?
I got laws. Good evening, everybody.
There you go.
There we go. Okay, point in the right direction. So my presentation, I'll, I'll cover the public safety sales tax, the capital sales tax fund, and have a brief statement about the line items that are in the budget and then what I call the decision packages that I'd like to present. I'll start by saying that absent the decision packages, all the public safety sales tax and capital fund line items, our budget remains flat for this fiscal year. So with regard to the decision packages and the additional expenditure, what we're requesting are two additional police officer positions. We currently have four vacancies that were already approved, that's down to three as of yesterday because we just sent the paperwork in to register someone for the academy class for August, so they'll be starting there. The two additional police officer positions, when the timing's right and the training's done and they're off break-in, and we have three recruits right now that are actually on break-in, our intent is to be responsive to the constituencies' concerns and complaints, and they're legitimate about the traffic and the driving. So what we'll do is we'll add one of those officers to the impact squad and their focus will be traffic, proactive, speed enforcement, red lights, the hazardous moving, as opposed to expired license plates and things like that, the things that affect public safety. And the other one, we will add one position to investigations to help them get through the number of cases that they're each assigned. We're also requesting two additional detention tech positions. We actually have one approved vacancy now, however, we have an individual who's in the final phases of the background check and the approval process, and we expect to make a job offer to them. The reason we need the detention tech positions is as we spin back up and come out of COVID and we add officers, they're using detention more, they're resting on warrants, there's more calls for service, disturbances, and if we aren't able to sustain detention being open with staffed detention techs, we run into situations where we have to rob Peter to pay Paul and we have to take an officer off the streets, which creates an unacceptable domino effect, because now we have to put an officer in detention. And what we need to do is these two positions will give us the bench strength we need to cover vacations, unexpected family medical leave, and, and all the other things. Give us the bench strength we need to keep detention open 24/7. The other part of our decision package is we're going to add four marked police vehicles to the fleet, three would be additions to the fleet and one would be a replacement. The three additions would require all of the upfitting. I can tell you the stewardship that they use and the cooperative effort between Public Works and the police department is a pleasure to watch. They will utilize every piece of equipment as long as they can on replacement vehicles, but the three vehicles that we're adding to the fleet will need all of the equipment purchased with them also. And then we have one admin vehicle that will be a replacement vehicle. So we'll also have some ballistic shields that amount to about 13,000, but that'll be reimbursed through a grant. So that's primarily what we're asking for this year are the positions and the vehicles. Point frankly, the fleet needs to be bolstered, it needs to be foundationally strengthened. When you have police cars, and this is where it's great to work with Public Works that are pushing over 100,000 miles, it's time, it's time to, to replace them. Additionally, we have some vehicles that were wrecked, we don't ever recover the money to replace those one for one. As a side note, the difference in vehicles is in the old days, you had steel frame Crown Vics, and when those got in a wreck, you put them on a frame straightener, you bend them back till they were straight and you put them back in service. The vehicles now are virtually all unibody, you've probably experienced this yourselves. They're designed with crush zones to protect the passengers, but by the same token, very often they do not, are, are not able to be put back in service, essentially they're totaled out. So it's been a pleasure to work with the fiscal staff and the other parts of the management team to put together what we believe is a, a sustainable ask for the year. We did hire six last year, we just lost six, and that is part of the attrition. But we believe that this number of vacancies with the two additional police officers and detention tech positions, not only can we recruit them, we can train them, and we can get them on the streets. So that's, uh, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I'm happy to ask any, or answer any questions anybody might have.
Ms. Ascher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had visited a couple of times with the chief over the past year about being able to take a close look at the police budget in, in an effort to really analyze changes in the percent of crime. Part of that was due to, you know, conversation with constituents, also what I was reading in the paper. So I went ahead and, and at that time, I expressed to him an interest in increasing the police budget. I just want to go back to a press release in November of 2017, that was when we were discussing the budget for 2018. It was also the year that we reduced the police budget by $4,300,000. That police budget at that time was a little bit more than what we have this year. It's actually lower than it was in, for 2018, three years ago. There was also a year that they had a lot of inflation that we were dealing with, and we know that this year likewise, we have inflation. And so my concern is, I don't see how that we have really addressed improvements in the police department when it's no greater than it was three years ago, and we've had considerable inflation. One of the things that we got at that time was a figure on how inflation impacted the total city in terms of our budget, overall budget, and I'm, I'm not hearing that. We have inflation, and I gotta think that we're a little bit lower than we were for the 2018 budget, now we have inflation, it's gotta realistically even be lower than that. So I'm not really getting a good feeling that, that, that you have everything you need or you're able to, to do it, at least I think, and that is to come up with a, a plan that's gonna address safety needs of this city in terms of what we had in crime. One of the problems that is Alderman, and at the risk of, of, of going, first of all, is Alderman, we can't really, we're not supposed to go to department heads, but if I wanted to compare, and at that time, I think I also asked the chief if I could look at the Blue Book, well, I guess there's no more Blue Book, but I wanted to get a feeling on just how much crime has increased in Raytown in the past three years. I thought that might give us at least a feeling on what the need of this city might be, or if indeed we need to increase the police budget in order to address crime if it was needed. And, and I really have no way of knowing that because I don't have any figures. So we as a board members are at risk at, you know, being, you know, upsetting other board members by asking staff members to give us figures, taking staff time to answer our questions, but these are questions that I would like to be able to, to get an answer to because public safety for families, for businesses, for every citizen that comes through Raytown is of number one priority. I, I take it most seriously, and I'm, I'm disappointed that we don't have an increase in the budget. Maybe it's an increase over last year, but it can't be because we have, really, inflation's is, is considerably higher, I think it was two or three percent just this summer alone. So Chief, just give me a feeling, am I out the lunch on this, or am I in the ballpark? Is there, should not be a concern about the police budget having more money?
The, when I spoke to the fact that the operating expenses were flat, that was absent the decision package that I just outlined, so that actually is an increase to the budget. And that is a shared expenses between capital sales and public safety sales tax. So the, the additional positions are increases to the budget, the additions to the fleet are increases to the budget so that the police department can operate efficiently and effectively and address those issues. The, the, the conversation or the roundtable about crime and fear of crime, statistics and the trends nationally and things like that, it'd be a wonderful, it would be, that would be a wonderful retreat, it'd be a wonderful time to sit down and talk about it because those are complex issues, and there, they, they, there, there are a lot of nuances to them. But this does actually represent, this decision package, as I call it, these are increases to the budget. Because right now, what we're, our goal is to get away from simply being a reactive police force and be a proactive police force, and that requires bodies, it requires resources. So the increases in these officers and the detention tech positions, that allows us to move forward, but we're also careful when we talk to the budget staff and things too is, there's a roadmap to an end game that's several years away, number of years away. So what we have to look at is what we can sustainably recruit, train, hire, and get on the streets. And like I mentioned, when we add those discretionary resources to, I don't think there's probably an Alderman here that hasn't gotten a complaint about the traffic and the way people drive and the things that are being dealt with nationally, because that is a national trend. And so, so that does actually represent an increase in the budget. All of those, all of those items that I talked about are increases.
The kinds of things that I'd like to know is like the increase in accidents, never deaths on our street, you know, to have a figures comparing, I know that we do, we have staff reports, I'm not asking to put more work on your, your daily job, but maybe when we have staff reports, I'd, I'd, I'd like to have some figures on, you know, what we're seeing in Raytown, and we used to have a newspaper, we don't get any information anymore, so.
We have an amazing, I mean, he is amazing, Kyle Stoker's one of the most amazing crime analysts in this region, so if we want to discuss, you know, some additional information or retooling what the, what you all get as far as that goes, that's absolutely, that's absolutely something we could talk about. The thing about the, the bear statistics is, they represent one facet of it, but there's also the other part where it's just the, you know, the, the fear of the potential. For example, when you talk to people who drive down the road and people are going by them really fast or they're running stoplights, those may not result in a, in a quantifiable accident per se, but it certainly does affect the mindset of people that drive through here. So those, those elements are all parts and pieces of it. And that's one of the reasons that we're dedicating one of the new folks, or one of the additional folks, to focus strictly on that, because I think that's a big complaint.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I do want to just point out to the other Alderman, I have failed to see a single piece of campaign literature that did not list public safety as number one to get elected. Everybody says it, and when it comes time for the budget and to support the police department, I think this is where we need to show that, and also in, in a continual asking questions, keeping, keeping public safety under the lens of the microscope, watching it to know what's really happening, because if we could do that, we will better be able to support you. I just want you to know that you have 100% of my support, I've said that before, that's why we've had at least three dialogues on this, and I, I, I wish that, you know, I wish we had a better budget, I'm, I'm sorry not to see it.
Next is Mr. Myers, and then Mary Jane Van Busker, do you want to speak a kid and tell what you were doing with your hand?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, you'll be, you'll be after Mr. Myers, and then Bill.
Okay, thanks. It just got dark.
I can still see you.
Okay. So I've got two questions, one maybe directed more towards Damon, but I got, I got kind of lost when you're talking about cars, so you're asking for three new ones, one will replace an old one, two will be just new going into service, and then you're getting rid of, I don't.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be four, four marked police vehicles, three will be additions to the fleet, and one will be a replacement.
Okay.
And then one will be an administrative replacement.
And then, so there's a, a couple on top of that are going to be junkers?
Well, usually by the time we're done with them, we're kind of done with them.
Gotcha.
So when they go, they go, they'll probably be sent to the auction.
Okay.
But the, the, I think probably what you need some, is the three additions to the fleet require all of the upfitting costs, you know, the cage, the siren, the lights, all of that that we usually transfer from one vehicle to the other.
Gotcha. And then the other question, Damon, I, I know that we're going to initiate the salary study, that's going to be, is this, this coming fiscal year? Have we worked that into the budget for if it ends up suggesting that we need to increase salaries, or is that going to be in the 22, 23 budget?
We have not worked it into the, the, this year.
Okay.
We did do some increases on different salaries just to, just to stay afloat.
Okay.
But when I say stay afloat, meaning that we're competing in order to try to compete with other entities in order to get personnel, so, and that's still within those salary ranges.
Okay.
So what we'll do is after we do the salary study, there will be increased to salary ranges, and then we'll have to look at it budget-wise and bring to you all something that could change that in there.
And then tweak, tweak it from there, okay?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that if you need any more officers or need to hire from the academy, that we are competitive.
Yeah, I think that, I, we've talked about that, and the goal is, yeah, I think that the, that's why we're fully supportive of it, but you know, the other thing too is, you know, the recruitment's everybody's job in the police department, because we're picking and choosing the people that are going to stand next to us on those dark streets at night, and so I think there's a lot of people out there, and I do think that salary is important, but there's a lot of other intangibles too, and so we're.
I agree.
We're going to chase those down.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And just to kind of reiterate, I mean, the salary study does increase salary ranges, so right now we got current salary ranges, so you try to utilize those ranges as much as possible, where we currently are in order to recruit where we, we can at this point.
Mary Jane Van Busker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, how many patrolmen do you have on the street at the current time?
What's the total right now? 24, 25, right in there. We have, and we have three recruits.
And you have three more that you're getting ready to put on the streets?
Yep, one I talked to her in the parking lot before I came up, this is her last night on break-in. So she will effectively be released tonight, and then we have two that are midway through, or at least a third of the way through, and then we have one that starts the academy in August.
So you have like, okay, so that would bring it up to like 28?
Yeah.
When they're all, okay, okay. I just want to say, Chief, I think you're doing a great job. The department didn't get in a mess overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight, but I think you're doing a great job of bringing it up to par, doing what you should be doing, and I wish I had a million bucks to kick into the budget, but unfortunately I don't. But whenever we can find extra money and whatever you need, we're going to do our best to get it to you.
I appreciate it, I, I'm blessed by being surrounded by an amazing team, so when that's in play, that's how you get success to happen. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Van Busker? And then you, Ms. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, we were talking about salary increases, and I know with the police department, there are, are step increases that take place also in addition to the COLA, which this year I think is about one and a half percent that's figured into the budget. I just want to say, our goal has been to increase our budget for the police department, to get our police officers what they need and, and get the department what they need, and I think we're going in the right direction with that, and, and certainly, I think we're using those funds prudently, and I appreciate that. And I, one question I, I do have, and this would be relative to not just the police department, but related to Public Works or other departments that we're looking at tonight, that Mr. Petrie can probably answer for us, is a comparison of last year's budget, requested budget or budget that we had for, like, the police department split up into three different funds, a general fund, a public safety sales tax, and capital sales tax, so it's kind of a comparison of what we had last year versus this year for those, for those funds as far as the police department would be three, three funds that we utilized for that. And as the chief said, in order to get the things done that we need to do, certainly there are increases there, and I think that's important, but just kind of so we can have an idea of where we were last year versus this year in, in dollars, I would appreciate that, that information. I think, and each, each of those categories may not have changed the same, some may be relatively flat, some may be, may have increased in order to get the things done that we need to get done. So if, Russ, if you, Russell, if you have that information or just an estimate of what that would be, that would, that would help put, put everything in perspective as to where we were last year at this time, where we are now in, in dollars.
Are you, Alderman Van Busker, so you're, you're asking for that information in particular right now?
Well, I would like, like to have that information, if possible. Just an estimate of what, what we budgeted for those three funds last year. I know there was concerns about, you know, not raising the budget, but I think we, we have. What we had in the budget last year for the general fund, public safety sales tax fund, and capital sales tax versus where we're at this year, how much, how much of an increase or how much of a change? And I'm not suggesting it's not warranted because it is, but I just to kind of, I know there was some question about that, you know, not increasing the budget, but I, I think it has been, and that would, that would help understand that better if we have that information. Is Mr. Petrie there?
He's here, I don't think he has that information with him, but it is an increase to the budget. What we could do is to share with you all as a board and just send you like a summary that shows the increase, which is typically what we add with, with the other items regarding the, the full budget. Would that be doable for you?
It, it would be helpful, I think, for all of us.
Sure.
To see, so we know where we are right now versus where we were a year ago, and, and that would be helpful for Public Works, it'd be helpful for any of the departments, but I think especially since there was some concern about not giving the police department what they need for the budget, I think it would, it would help us understand, you know, what, what it was last year versus what it's going to be this coming year or what's requested, so.
And, and that's, we can do that, typically what we do is just provide, provide the summary sheet that shows the line items from year to year, and then gives you the, the before and after, most of budget alone were projected, and then actual, typically the actual is about two years ago, once you finalize those from your, from your audit report, and then we'll do a budget and projected, so we'll provide those summary sheets to all of you all.
I appreciate that, and, and at this time, we really don't have that information, and usually it'll go back, you know, a few years and show what it was back from 18, 19, 20, 21.
Yeah, all the way up, yes.
That, that would be very helpful, okay?
Sounds good, will do. That was in ten before, definitely move forward with that.
And it, I want to reiterate to what a good job our police department's doing and the direction we're going, and I think we're absolutely going in the right direction, and we need to, you know, within our means, we need to get our police department everything they, they certainly need, and they deserve that.
Thank you.
Ms. Hayden?
I just had a couple of comments and then questions. So I just want to say that when I talk, when I was knocking on doors and talking to our constituents, one of the main concerns was the police department and the safety of our citizens. So I, I know that the budget was cut several years ago, and that was a concern, but again, I think that we have addressed some of those concerns, and, and Chief Kuhl, I just want to say that I appreciate what you've done and how you are focusing on safety for our city. So if I understand correctly, you're wanting two additional officers, two detention techs, two additional detention techs, and four vehicles? Is that correct? Or three new vehicles and one?
Correct. The summary is, yeah, two additional police officers other than what we already have approved, two detention techs to allow us to staff that 24/7, 365, without having to pull officers off the street, and then as far as the vehicles, it's four marked police cars, those are three new ones to the fleet and one replacement, and then one replacement admin, admin vehicle. That's the total, that's the ask.
So if I hear you correctly, we lost six officers, but we hired six replacement officers.
Yeah, we hired six. Yes, we, we hired six, but we lost six, however, we also retained two of those who retired, and they went over to be detention techs, which is nice because a lot of times, police departments, they lose that institutional knowledge, it goes right out the door, and they just transitioned into detention. So, you know, that's often the case in all police departments, you know, it's battling the attrition versus how many you hire. And so we hired six and we, and we had, and we lost six per se for different reasons, and we have, as I said, we have four vacancies now, and we need, we'd like to get those two additional ones, we're confident we can fill those, and.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and so do you, how close, do you think that by adding those two additional officers and two detention techs, that'll put us closer to where we need to be, or are we still a long ways from, from staffing, staffing up to where we were in 2016?
Yeah, it's a ways away still, but this is a. Yeah, it's a ways away still, but this is, uh, this is a migration in the right direction that we feel is defensible. And, uh, because, you know, if you, i- if we had a pot of gold at the end of the rainbow show up, um, we wouldn't be able to, we have to exercise stewardship with the number of our, what we ask for because we have to be able to hire them and train them. Um, and it relates to the number of FTOs that we have available because the one thing you don't want to do is go down the road of mediocrity and ask for more than you can really sustainably handle. So it is incremental. And as, as, uh, Alderman, uh, Mrs. Van Busker said, it didn't happen overnight, and it doesn't get fixed overnight, but this is a solid roadmap back to where we need to be.
And I can attest that, that the traffic issue is, is a mess. People, and I think that our citizens have talked about it, you know? We don't have enough officers, so why not run a red light? You know, why not speed across, uh, Raytown Road? So I think that, that this is very much needed. I'm going to be in, in favor of, of, um, approving those.
I appreciate that. It's amazing, as, uh, as the mayor who did this for a number of years can attest, when you dedicate even one individual to doing that exclusively, it is, it is significantly impactful when you have somebody dedicated to, to traffic. They can get a lot done in a twelve-hour day.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
You done, Ms. Hayden?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, Mr. Azier and then Mary Jane Van Busker. Mr. Azier?
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to clarify that the actual budget this year is thirty thou, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars lower than it was in 2018. We lost, I don't, can't remember the number of officers we cut back, but what we're hiring back is not those officers, but the officers that we've lost since then. All we're doing is kind of reclaiming where we were two years ago. So we really haven't done anything in favor of the police department. We're just sustaining ourselves, if that, because of inflation. That thirty-seven thousand is actually much greater than that loss, though. Just, we haven't done much for them.
Mary Jane Van Busker.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a couple of things here that I don't understand what they are, and I'm going to ask. It's on the second page of the, of the general fund, and Crime Stoppers. How much of that, uh, twenty-five hundred is used or has been used in the past?
Oh, it's used, if you, uh, if you see, you know, it's a regional effort, the Crime Stoppers. And, uh, they do a, a fantastic job of, um, identifying witnesses, and, uh, they actually pay them, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars in Kansas City for homicide, um, that's identified. So that is a, that is a significantly high return on investment because, as you know, um, there's no geo-fencing to crime. So the crime, the efforts that Crime Stoppers put forth and the, the people identified, put in jail and convicted for those homicides and high-level crimes, um, it is, it is significant. So that is a, that is a significant return on investment for us.
Okay. And the other question is, what is I A P E?
Where is, is that, uh?
It's right above Crime Stoppers. Or is it A P E? I think it's.
Oh, I believe that's the, uh, yeah, International Association for, um, I believe that's for our administrative assistant, the International Association of Professionals. I can't remember what the four letters stand for. Do you remember, Dionne, what those stand for? That's it. I knew that we had, it's, it's the property and evidence membership that we need, that we maintain each year.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, twenty-five dol, twenty-five thousand to somebody who can identify a criminal, to me, is not enough. They've earned it. I mean, if we can put them away, hey, twenty-five thousand is a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, it is, uh, it is a wonderful, that's a wonderful program, very well-run.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else? We are now at six forty. We've got about twenty minutes to try to, try to finish this up before our regular seven o'clock posted meeting. So anybody else have anything for the chief? Thank you, chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Well done. Thank you, as usual. All right. We now go to Jose Leon, Public Works Transportation Sales Tax Fund, Stormwater Fund. What do you have for us, Mr. Leon?
Well, good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. Before I get started, let me just say a real quick thank you to, uh, Russell Petrie, Finance Director, and his team, as well as our City Administrator, Damon Hodges. Um, I'm going to try and cover this as quickly as possible with our time left. Essentially, the capital sales tax, uh, general fund, transportation sales tax, and our stormwater fund are all about helping us find ways to, uh, my term is work smarter, not harder. Um, the additions to staff that are within, uh, the general fund and some of the sanitary sewer fund, which we'll touch on later, um, in staffing, are a mechanic position and a full-time, uh, switching from part-time to a full-time, uh, facility maintenance, uh, employee. Um, I think this gets back around to what, uh, Chief Kuhl was saying earlier about, you know, a customer service level, um, internally from department to department, how we can help them get their vehicles maintained, um, working again and out the door, back out on the street to ultimately serve the public. So, um, that speaks to the mechanic position. The, uh, facility maintenance technician or, or worker that we will have is, um, it's a change from part-time to full-time, uh, budgeted position. And really what we believe is that we can bring somebody in on our own to, uh, clean and maintain our, our facility, uh, better than, um, a potential contracted, uh, organization. And with, um, COVID not seeming to go away, um, we think that we can, uh, you know, quality assurance, quality control that a little bit better internally. So that's really the changes with staffing. Outside of that, you know, what you'll see in the transportation sales tax, stormwater fund, is just a commitment to, um, our infrastructure, um, our streets, um, getting into a little bit more spending on our street maintenance program, our annual street maintenance program, um, continuing, uh, what we believe, uh, is an effective job of our stormwater maintenance program, which we're finding out more and more information on every day. Um, and similarly with our capital sales tax, uh, because we don't have a lot of dollars to do projects in our stormwater fund, it helps to kind of subsidize, if you will, the cost to do a, a, a project on the stormwater side, which is what you see in the capital sales tax. Um, I'll kind of leave that there, and I'll answer any questions that you might have specifically about, uh, these, uh, four funds for Public Works.
Sorry, Mary Jane Van Busker.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Leon, you said, um, it would be cheaper to hire an in-house person full-time to come in and clean rather than to contract it out. How much money are you saving? Because by the time you add in benefits, are you really saving any money?
I didn't say cheaper. I think what I said was we believe we can do a more effective job of ensuring the quality of the, of the product that we're paying for. Um, it was a part-time budgeted position, um, this fiscal year. We did not get that filled because we've just had a number of, uh, staffing shortages, so it wasn't a priority for us. Um, and our, our person that we have right now is doing best job as he can. Uh, but going into, uh, next fiscal year, we believe we can fill that position.
Okay.
Mr. Azier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Help me on the transportation sales tax. Does our overlay come out of that?
It does.
It does come out of that. Uh, can you tell me, um, when we budgeted that item? I know we're estimating what we're going to be taking in. Um, have we seen a decline in revenue in transportation sales tax?
I'd say, uh, the sales tax, all the sales taxes have been pretty straight, uh, pretty, pretty much the same amount the past couple of years. Uh, partially, like we mentioned this past year, uh, even with the, uh, COVID impact, the fact that your sales tax is based off of places like your, um, your typical goods, like your groceries, your home goods, things like that, has allowed us to be pretty streamlined on our sales taxes. And that goes from your transportation, uh, your public safety and those.
I asked the question because I was trying to get an understanding how COVID might have affected that particular tax.
Oh, don't even worry, I mean, it, it, it does affect it in the sense that if we could get more, it'd be great, uh, but they've been about the same the past two years, amount-wise.
So, um, are we increasing the amount of money we're spending on overlay this year? Over last year? It seemed like we are. I just wanted to know the amount.
Yeah. We, we are. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm a little slow to, uh, commit to overlay specifically, but street maintenance, yes. Um, we are, we've, we've budgeted more dollars to, toward our street maintenance.
Okay. Um, and that sales pack, that transportation sales tax is earmarked for, for transportation. It can't be spent anywhere else, so.
Yes, uh, your transportation sales pack is earmarked for that regarding transportation items. Um, and is that what you're asking, Alderman?
Well, yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at, um, how, how much money, um, for transportation comes out of the general fund?
None. The amount you're seeing is coming from your transportation sales tax.
Right. That's what I was, I asked that question because.
Well, I, I, I think what I got, know what you're getting at as well is fund balance. So your transportation sales backs had a fund balance between that and your trans, and what you're expected or budgeted to get this year is how you are able to look at that amount.
Thank you, that's what I was getting at.
And that eventually will run out the fund balance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, what else do you have for us, Mr. Leon? Anything else?
I think that's it for these funds. I'm going to give it back to, uh, Russ to start the sewer fund.
Now, next is Russ Petrie, your Finance Director, Sewer Fund Finance and Public Works.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, the sewer fund also includes a finance section, and, uh, if you'll notice in that finance section, that is where we pay the sewer treatment costs as well as some of the admin staff that is in the finance department, uh, that is functionally, um, allocated to that fund. Um, the treatment costs, uh, for this next year are expected to be nine, right around nine percent more than what they were in previous years. Um, so that increases and is reflected in, uh, that section, um, where the payments are. But roughly, the finance section of the sewer fund is, that's what it covers. It covers any of the, um, admin staff that are there and also the treatment costs, um, that are associated with that fund. And if you move on to the general fund finance section, that is where, uh, obviously the finance staff resides with the functional, um, duties with City Hall, um, duties as far as keeping the books, um, making sure everything's accurate as far as the finances, uh, and maintaining everything according to GAAP and satisfying the auditors, and that's where the auditors are paid from. Um, so there is, um, roughly not a large increase there. It's very small. Um, I think it was around eight thousand, so, um, it's pretty flat. And, um, the TIF fund is next. And the TIF fund is, um, where all the TIF revenues are collected and also where, uh, the debt service is paid from. And that fund is expected to be right around, um, right around where it should be. Um, if you remember, we refinanced, sorry about that. Um, we refinanced the, uh, the, uh, TIF bonds a couple of years ago, and that has put us more on a flat repayment, um, amortization schedule. Uh, so everything is running pretty much accordingly to how we had planned it at that point. Uh, if everything remains stable, um, with that TIF, then we should have no problems. Um, the bonds are expected to be paid off in 2031.
What was the year again?
2031. So.
Is that a thirteen?
The next is the Capital Improvements Fund, and that fund is specifically, uh, to track any CID. Specifically, what's in this fund right now is the Ditzler CID that is in here. Uh, so we do keep the bucks for that CID, um, and so the revenues are reflected there and also the expenses. And that's all that's in that fund.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Petrie? Mr. Azier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. Um, so this is a fully balanced budget?
It is. Um, you know, like last year, uh, we had, we had a, um, the expenditures were slightly over what the revenues were, but we had fund balance to cover it. And so it's, it's pretty close, um, to what it was last year. We did, we did expect to spend some out of fund balance. I'm, I've yet to see that, uh, this year. Um, but remember, we also budgeted for every position being fold, being filled last year.
Do you have an idea how many or if we have any one-time expenditures? Um, you know what I mean by that? Uh, expenditures that we won't have next year? For example, I know we did this room, for example. Uh, how many things are in the budget for this year that we will not be paying for the year after that? I, I asked that question to get a feeling on what we might be able to plan for the year after that.
Well, setting aside any Public Works, um, uh, capital improvements that are ongoing every year, um, we really don't have any one-time hits that are large, um, especially in general fund. Um, you remember last year, we had the CARES funds coming in, um, and those were fully expended in this fiscal year. Um, so we don't expect any of that to carry over into next year. Now, now, if we run into any grants that specifically pay for something, then that could change.
Right. I, I, I bring that up because, uh, you know, we do, from year to year, have what we call the one-time expenditures that, uh, are not normal, that don't carry over from year to year. And, uh, I, I, I would, you know, in, in looking at our goal session that this board, you know, took their time and money to, to do, you know, the, the goals that we set, um, and one of them, by the way, with public safety, we ranked very high. Um, you know, we didn't address it anymore. So as we prepare for next year, I would hope that, and, and to our City Administrator, that, that we got to keep those things in sight. If we sit down as a board and have a goal-setting session and say that we want to improve the police department and then don't, you know, we really haven't met our goals, and we look at things like one-time expenditures and planning for the future so that we can accomplish the things that we then do as a Board of Aldermen accomplish.
Uh, I could speak to that. You, in your goal setting, we had capital improvements, neighborhood improvements, uh, public safety. Uh, so those things, those things have been improved. Uh, when you hire four new people, four new officers for the department, which is the only department that had four additions to them, your budget is, you, you, when you do your budget, you're looking at both what you have incrementally budgeted-wise but also what you have fund balance. And so what we chose with this budget to do to utilize based off your goals, uh, the fund balance to help offset those. So when you look at this and you, let's go back to transportation. Uh, capital improvements was something that you asked for. Capital improvements, if you see in your capital expenditures under tow, under your transportation, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, uh, that's the most you've spent or even programmed to spend in almost three to five years as far as a street maintenance project beyond a one-time project. We did, we spent quite a bit of it last year, all on three-fifty highway. So what we did was try to come up with street reconstruction projects. There were more neighborhood projects, along with seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand going towards your overlay, your street maintenance, those type of projects. So you did do that in, in this budget. So you came to two-point-three billion. Your typical amount is about one-point-five, maybe a little bit more, uh, for that, for that bu, uh, for that sales tax. So you utilize your fund balance in order to make up for that. So what we've done is utilize the fund balances that we've been, been saving over the past few, few years to do those. You call them one-time, but we're, we're really looking at capital expenses that may not need to be in the next year, may not need to be as much so that you can escalate, scale, scale back what you can do and what you can't do based off your budget. So we did do that in this budget. Uh, we utilized those to figure out ways then to improve that. to figure out ways to improve that.
Damon, thank you very much. Actually, when we're talking about budgets, that statement clarified the budget in essence. And I'm glad I asked the question, because had I not, you wouldn't have said it. I think the whole city, as well as the board, needs to have a real clarification of how this budget fits in to every department and our goals.
Sure.
And what we've really accomplished or have not accomplished, rather than just talking about one department after the other.
And this isn't our last meeting on budgets. I mean, so we typically bring it all together and put a nice little bow on it.
No, I know. I've got some serious questions for the next one, too. So thank you.
No problem. But also, I want to, if Jose can move forward, if anyone has any more questions, with our time getting near, if Jose can move forward on the sanitary sewer projects and the amount, because that is that kind of speaks more to Alderman Asia's question regarding money being spent. I'm not going to take your thunder. Go ahead, Jose.
Oh, by all means. So sanitary sewer, just real quick. This is a commitment, I feel like, to the citizens of Raytown, to staff to start fixing problems in our sewer system. We've talked about this since I've been here, but I'm sure it's been talked about a number of times before. And I think if I could just point you down to, you know, the capital expenditures line, you'll see some rather large dollar amounts. And that's because some of the information we're going to present to you this evening, and our next meeting, and then next month as well, you're going to see all the work that's been a culmination of the last year that staff has been working on at the engineering level to help us identify where we should be investing and how we should be investing dollars in our sanitary sewer system. So, you know, I'm not going to take up much more time than that. If you have any specific questions about our sanitary sewer fund, I'm happy to try to answer any of those in the time we have left.
I don't see anybody asking any questions. Thank you, Mr. Leon.
No problem.
Appreciate it. All right. I believe that's all for now. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Asia. Let's do it by affirmation. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? All right, we are adjourned at 6:56 PM, and see you back in here sharp at 7 o'clock.